Good evening. We are here today at the council chambers for a committee meetings. We're gonna have a committee as a whole, and then with the first thing we're probably gonna do is go to executive session, and then we'll be back for the committee meetings. Mrs. Knight, could you please call the roll?
There has to be a motion first.
For the roll?
For the, to go into executive session.
We're not there yet, are we? Are we gonna roll first?
No, not just for the executive session with the motion as stated with the park board.
I'd like to make a motion, recess into executive session for discussion of preparing for, conducting, or reviewing negotiations and bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment.
Along with the park board.
Along with the park board.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mr. Whitten. Now we can have a roll.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Emery? I believe Mr. Harrelson is here, so the motion is adopted.
Okay, and we are going to do executive session in a conference room right behind council chambers. So you may proceed there now.
I'd like to make a motion to come back into regular session.
Motion to return from exec session by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
For the park board, thank you, sorry, for the park board. Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Emery?
Yes.
Mr. Harrelson?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda tonight is a committee at the whole to discuss upcoming salaries for the next term of elected officials. Mr. Tidgerton, any information on that?
Uh, you do have a memo in your packet. This is a, I guess, either a second committee meeting or a continuation of the committee meeting that you held a couple of months ago, I think, regarding setting compensation in the future. You do have some charts and some background information in that, in the report. I will note that I know that one of the outstanding questions had to do with some of the benefits that certain elected officials receive, and there are some questions about that. I believe those questions have been answered and are not part of any changes to the compensation schedule.
So anyone have, Mr. Schilling?
Thank you.
I guess that answers your question.
Yeah, I looked at the schedule, and I think somebody did a little study of what other councils receive in compensation in our area. And first I would say, I think we are very grateful to the citizens of Detroit a lot to pay us what we get paid. And my question would be is I, the last time we did this, we only did it for two years, covering the next term. So I don't know whether that, I think the last time we did it, we covered it for maybe two years. So, and some of the questions I have is, is there a need to go out to 2030 or 2031, wherever that thing ends up? Can we just, can we do it just for two years? And then the other thing that I think the concern was is that the state has set some limits on what somebody can earn and still qualify for pension benefits from the state. And I know that our current compensation is above that limit and will be for a couple of years. And then the state right now is saying that they're gonna increase it by like 1.75%. So I, I think in my own mind, I would like, if we're gonna talk about increasing salaries to, you know, instead of going 3%, go to the 1.75. And that would keep us ahead of the state's schedule for, you know, for not receiving pensions, but it, again, I think, you know, we're well compensated for what we do here. And so I would think that we might wanna look at, instead of a 3%, doing a 1.75 going forward on this and go, you know, we need to go three years or something to do that versus going clear out to 20, 2030 or the 2031, where, how far that's scheduled went out. And that way we can, I mean, we can always, as we say, we can always meet and decide, I mean, we're, first of all, we're not, we're not talking about our compensation. We're talking about whoever gets elected.
In '25.
In '25. And so, well, actually, not '25, it starts in '26, January '26. And so the, you know, we, none of us may be elected, reelected, and that's why, that's why it's a crapshoot. And so the, so, you know, I think if we, if we did '26, '20, '26 to '28, that would cover the next term. And, you know, I don't need, and then we can always, who's ever there can then make the decisions for the following term. I mean, it's not, it's not something we have to go out this far. And so I, I think we may wanna look at two things. I want the amount of years that we're gonna be looking at this thing and also the percentage of compensation.
I just have one question. I apologize, I don't have that chart in front of me.
I, my computer died, I didn't bring my computers.
Does it only cover, what was in the packet, does it only cover council or does it go to mayor and auditor as well?
The elected positions.
Well, I'm talking about council. I'm not, I mean, I mean.
Well, that's why the schedule goes up to 32.
Yeah, I mean, we're talking about auditor, law director, and mayor, and the treasurer, and then, but I'm concerned, my discussion is strictly on the council. And, you know, I, you know, the other ones, obviously, we can, we can, are still open for discussion on that, but I think as a council member, I think that we are, based on especially what others' cities pay, council people receive in the other cities, I think we are well compensated. And I think, you know, going out, you know, 3% a year, you know, I'm not sure we need that. I at least, you know. So I, I, that's, that's my opinion that you guys can, you know, feel for.
Any other comments?
Was, was there a reason for the percentage to match what OPERS was requiring to?
Well, OPERS required 1.75. And that doesn't start, I mean, like, we waited two years and then started increasing our salaries at, at the end of the two-year period at 1.75, we'd still be ahead of OPERS at that particular point in time.
Look, it's, you're talking about 500 bucks a year. It doesn't matter to me one way or the other, but 1.75 is fine. The key thing, I think, that was important in looking at this was that you got direct, it met the OPERS requirement for balance. So I, I don't think any of us are doing it for compensation, and I, I don't know where the 3% came from either, but 1.75 is fine too, as long as it, is Grant still here? Does that, 1.75 is the amount that OPERS is going up per year?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, I think it's 1.70.
That's what, that's what the report says, but I just wanna.
I've previously forwarded a publication from OPERS, and I'm assuming that what's, what's in there is the exact same thing.
And then if they change things, then we can always go back and change for the next council years.
We should just make sure that we mirror whatever is necessary to have, to comply with the OPERS annual requirement.
Right.
And I don't think, yeah.
And then were the, the years to take into account the current four-year term of mayor, auditor, and director of law, so that you could do the following term when they were elected? I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to say that there might have been a reason that we went out further than just the two years for council, because we have other positions that are elected for a different number of years.
Well, the. Mr. President, I think, and that's Mrs. Snee's question, isn't the, the, the salaries are set for mayor and law director and those type, those are four-year deals anyway, so we can't, can we go back and, and change their compensation?
No, but I, I believe this was proposed for the next four-year term, if I was reading that correctly.
So we can't do anything for them for a while anyway.
Well, you can do it now for their next term.
And that's why I think it was done now.
Like you're doing it for our next, anybody that's up here for their next term.
Yeah, and if you're, if you are pegging it to 1.75 versus the 3, that's a simple spreadsheet change.
I, I'm just talking for council. At 1.75, I was just talking for council. I didn't, I, I had, wasn't talking about the mayor or any of the other, you know, people that were, that was on that list. So, but I, I think in our, my case, I, you know, 1.75 would be more of it than not, I think.
But I think what they're doing by the chart is trying to keep everybody parity.
Right.
With, with, with the cost of losing increase or whatever the increases are making. Is that correct? Those that were on the committee.
It was what had been, I think, granted to employees previ- in the previous contracts.
So what you're saying is still keeping, like, the law director at 3% raise, since this might be a substantial portion of his income.
Right. The mayor and those, and the other ones, but I think, in my opinion, for council, my own personal, you know, 1.75 is more, is adequate, very adequate, I think, from that standpoint. So, so we could do.
You may write a check for your own 1.75 and give it to whoever you want.
Yeah, I would, to me, the simplicity, because it's such a small amount, the simplicity that you don't have to come back, and two, that it's all elected officials tends, I mean, the amount is very small. So to me, it'd be, the simplicity would be the ease for doing that and making, that you don't have to come back. It's just taken care of for that next term.
Makes payroll a little easier.
But I.
The simplicity of extending it out or the simplicity of keeping everybody at the same.
Simplicity that everyone's at that same level, whether you're elected official, the mayor, law director, auditor, et cetera.
Well, they're all elected officials.
Right, that's what you're saying.
But you're saying, divide that up. If you're this elected official, you get this, and if you're this elected official, you only get this.
Well, yeah, I just, as I say, my, in my case, I would, I, as a council person, I would, I would say that the 1.75, again, based on what everybody else is getting paid in the area, we, we get paid very well, and so we don't, I mean, and again, I mean, we're Nick, we're talking about Nicholson times, but I, but it's, I, I'd be very, it's a public perception as well, it's, hey, you know, let's, you know, it's, if it's 1.75, it just makes more, more sense to me than the 3% for council. If we wanna give, we're talking about the mayor and the law director and the other treasurer, and give them the 3%, I mean, that's, again, that's not a hard thing to do from a, from a personnel standpoint issue.
Yeah, but I think to Bill's point, Jeff, the logic there doesn't make sense. If you're gonna do it forever, all the other elected officials.
Why aren't you doing it?
Why don't you do it for this, for this one? I think that's where the, that's where your point's coming from. Now, I don't, I'm not saying I disagree with you that we shouldn't do 1.75, but I don't know, maybe we do 2% for everybody, and then that's a reasonable compromise all the way around, and, and then it's.
That'd be acceptable.
Does that make sense?
That makes sense, do 2%.
Okay, I move we do 2% for everybody.
And may I clarify that, does that extend to the next term for the auditor, law director, and mayor, and the same terms out to 2031 for the treasurer, council member, and council president?
You can only do two terms, but yes.
Okay.
Well, I mean, you.
Uh-oh.
I mean, I'm looking at the chart and just trying to clarify what I'm seeing on this chart.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, um, just, and just a historical, I wanna give some historical context, and actually, until Saturday, I wasn't aware as far as for the mayor, the auditor, I don't know if Mr. Friggy's aware that this is being extended to the next term, because our term doesn't extend for two years beyond what we're talking about here. And, yeah, I mean, I think somebody said something about it being a substantial portion of the income, at least for Mr. Friggy and, or for the auditor's position and the law director's position. From a historical standpoint, those positions, they had freezes where there was no increase whatsoever. And I, I think for, whether it's me or somebody else, it needs to be competitive. I, I would be happy to share with you. I know that, I know Mr. Friggy brings a lot of expertise to it, and I know especially this past year, the work that I did with a certain building in town, there, I, I put a lot more into it than otherwise, so, you know, I, you know, it's a little difficult for me to come up here and, and point out that there is some distinction between council. And I also wanna give you that historical context where there was, there were freezes on that as well.
I appreciate that. I still move that we do 2% across the board, and then we can address that when it comes through. That makes the most, I mean, 2% is one of those, like, common numbers that people think about with costs of, and based on. I mean, I know we can't talk about other things, but 2% seems pretty easy math.
And then I still wanna clarify, is that for the next term of council, that would be '26 and '27, and the next term that doesn't start until '28 for the auditor, law director, and mayor? Or are we only limiting what we're doing?
That would be this, that would be this chart. Everything in gray on this chart, we would change to 2% instead of 3%.
I think so.
So it would go out that far, unless you wanted to shorten the timelines.
I'm, I was fine with what appears on this chart. I'm just clarifying that that's what we're doing.
We can always adjust it, right? I mean.
You always reserve the right later, in later years to revisit. That's, that's always.
Actually, your point is the law director mayor is not elected to '26. We're doing '25, '26. So we can, we can, we can look at it again in two years to see if they should go up more, but I think that makes sense.
So you.
2% across the board.
I have no problem with them having 3%, the, the.
Law director and.
Law director, yes. Because they have had 3%.
I saw that law director, auditor, and mayor, they, they had to get the 3%. We'll take that, we'll take the 2.
Were you throwing the treasurer at?
Well, the treasurer would be the, the 3%.
That's a full-time.
I don't, that's fine. I'll amend my motion. 3% for all elected officials excluding council. Council, 2% for easy figure, and then we're done.
Great.
Yeah.
Okay, when you say council, are you including the council president?
Yes. Council president and council members, 2%.
Motion by Mr. Severt?
Second.
Second by Mr. Schilling. Any other questions, discussions, inputs? Do we have input? Do we go to the public? Anybody wanna have a comment to the public?
Chair.
This is normal committee meeting.
Hi, I'm Steve Henrickson of 975 Dickerson. I appreciate the honor that you all bring to the city. I think going out to 2031 is a little far-fetched. I don't know what my social security's gonna be next year, which is 2025, which is my primary income. I don't know anybody else that knows what their salary's gonna be seven years from now. And to think that you have been given the, the insight to know what inflation's gonna be over that period of time is hard to believe, if not arrogant. We've gone through periods of time, we've had very, very high inflation. We've also gone through periods of time, we've had zero inflation. So who knows whether the 2% or 3% that's being forecast for the next seven years is even close to being what's gonna really happen. I don't think anybody here should be punished for serving the city, okay? Don't get me wrong. But let's not kid ourselves about how accurate our forecast on economies can be. I don't know whether you're gonna have another time at some point, if you say, if the next couple of years we have zero inflation, or you're gonna have another big meeting to the see, oh, we really screwed up on the 2% and the 3%, are you then gonna do it? I'm not exactly sure what you're basing on and whether that's now cast in concrete, that's what we're gonna do for the next seven years, or is it something you're gonna say, okay, let's look at it? You may wanna look at it next year, for all I know. So as part of the public, I'd, I'd be careful what you're doing, okay? Cause from, from the outside looking in, it looks to me like you're building in something that's really illogical.
Can I address?
And unsupportable in terms of what the forecast is gonna be, so.
Can I, can I address that? Uh, Steve, to, back to where we initially was at 2% and then for accommodation purposes to go to 3, this, this is probably important for the public to know and where this sort of originated.
Right.
So in order to get a, a public employee retirement annual credit, you have to make a certain amount of money.
And that's going to go up 1.75% per year. And so the 2% was just a, a evening out of that.
Mr. Schilling's initial proposal was 1.75% to annualize that out. So the projection to go to 2031 is, is just simp, I don't know where that number came from, to, where 2031, except that's gonna be the end of the, if you add the four-year term elected officials, that will be the end of their term, which is where, which is, I think, probably why staff came up with that, with that level. Cause they're going to be elected in 2027 through 2031. So that's probably why staff used 2031.
It's their next term.
It's their number, cause that's their, that's the, that's the four-year elected officials' next term. So I, I mean, Patrick or whoever put this chart together can probably explain that better. But the rationale behind this was to just, not to increase salaries, just to make them commensurate with what was necessary to get the annualized PRS credit, which, which we exceed right now. So all that they're doing is saying, hey, we, we make, we meet it right now, but we might not make it in 2028, so we're gonna incrementally put those up, cause you're kind of right at that cost. So that, that's really, the purpose wasn't to increase salaries, I mean, and.
I understand that, that's fine.
Yeah, so that, that's really, so, well, you, you asked what, what the explanation, so that's why the 2% went out to 2031, because that's the, that's the information that I think Grant got from PRS to say, okay, we know up through 2031, here's how much it's gonna have to go up.
Right.
So that, that's where that date came from, I think.
I, I understand that, okay. I understand there's a floor that you have to meet to, to meet some state requirements. Got that. I'm not sure, I haven't looked at the calendar to see how many years it is from, you know, from 2027 to 2031. So the people that are in office now are gonna be, be reelected in 2027. Is that correct?
For, for the re-election. Not a, yeah.
Let's say this group does win.
One, one at a time, I'm sorry.
If this group wins, they will be from 2026?
2025.
25, 2025 and 2026, right?
26 and 27.
26 to 27.
26 to 27.
26 is 27. The mayor, the auditor, the law director, their next term, I'm, I'm assuming that's why it's up to 31. Cause their, their terms aren't up to run until this group's, whatever this body is, is reelected. So they were showing the next term for everybody.
All right, so this, this group really doesn't apply to the 2031 figure. Is that correct? Unless we're in office.
Yeah.
And have another term.
Yeah, that is, we, yeah.
If you had two more terms, you would be, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think he's playing.
There's a confusion in my mind, and I think probably.
If, if I may.
Lynn?
I think there, there's a two-year term that would start for the future council that this would apply to. But if we want to apply it to the mayor, the law director, and the auditor, we need to apply it, we can apply it to their current term, so it would not start until 2028 for whoever takes those positions in that next term. If that's.
That's fine. I, I understand that completely. Let's talk about the people around this table now.
That's the 2026.
Your terms expire when? 2026?
At the end of 2025.
2025.
December 31st, 2026.
25.
And nothing that we're doing applies to us now. It's whoever is in the new council.
Yeah.
All right, so.
So to get the increase, you would have to be back here and win.
I'm sorry, I can't.
To get the increase that we're talking about, you would have to win reelection.
That doesn't sound all that bad.
No. Because you can't, we can't give ourselves a raise. In-term raise.
In the interim, but you, if you apply a raise now for the next term and you get reelected, that means you can't get that?
Yeah, you can get that one, but you can't, but we can't go and say, okay, we're going to 2%. Yes.
But after the next election cycle, if you all get reelected, then you're eligible to get whatever you decide today. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so now I understand. But that doesn't take you to 2031, does it?
No, no, but the 2031.
I understand it's for the professional folks that get paid, paid, and you're trying to be competitive around the world.
Of four years.
Okay?
Yeah.
So, whole, wholehearted me, I'd say, oh, if the elected official's making 10 times what you guys are making, you know, you wanna be competitive, but you know, there's other towns you could work for if you don't like the money here, okay?
If you get elected.
So I'm not, well.
I move.
You know, you're, you're working, you're working for the electorate, okay? And be careful, there's more than needed, or in the electorate. And I think you have to make sure that your message today is clearly communicated, and I don't think with what you're talking about today is gonna be clearly understood by people that are watching this video or anything else. So I'm begging you, please be careful how you present this, cause it's gonna look, may not look good. And God knows you got enough problems dealing with, to deal with, rather than the public perception that something's going on that you don't like, okay? That's my only point. And, and trying to go out that far, seven years, what's gonna happen in seven years, who, who knows? So, but anyway, whatever you publish to the public, be careful of how you communicate that, cause today it doesn't, it's confusing. I don't have anything else. Does anybody have any question?
Oh, I was gonna clarify. I think why it's going out seven years is cause that's what, the 1.75 is happening over the next seven years, okay? That, they're telling us that, and so we're just doing an increase to cover that so we can stay as committed time into the OPRS. So they have given us what they're going to increase. They've already given us what they're saying is their income.
The current point to that is why don't you make it 30 years?
Because they have not given us 30 years. The state is only saying seven years. So the state is giving, we're gonna do this for seven years.
Okay, that's fine.
If you wanna get your time committed, we have to match to make sure that, that we meet the OPRS. Cause it's not about the salary or money we're making, it's time to make.
I think Todd and Bill and everybody else is, is correct. It's, it's somewhat an issue with, with OPERS, okay? Personally, if we got paid $1 and they come to meetings for 12 months, to me, I think they should get credit for one year of service at OPERS. OPERS doesn't have that attitude.
Well, of course not.
Uh, that, that's, I think that's the issue.
So we're not raising our salary just to raise the salary. We're doing it just to make.
A retirement credit.
Right, for a retirement credit.
If, if you stay long enough, yes.
Well, yeah, if you get reelected, yeah. Always, always a question.
Yeah.
All right, thanks for your time.
You're just trying to balance.
Yeah, appreciate your comments, Steve. Mr. Behringer?
Mr. Razzell, I wanna thank you first of all, Bradley Behringer, 105 Crestwood. I wanna thank you first of all for your explanation. It made sense to me. I just have a question regarding OPERS and the contribution that is made by you as council members. Is it a percentage, or is it a flat rate?
It's a percentage. It's a percentage of your salary.
Okay, is that the current 1.75 that is being talked about?
That's Medicare.
Okay. So if this is a, so if this is a current, if this is a currently just Medicare?
No, Medicare is 1.75.
That's what I'm, that's what, that's what I'm.
That's not what we're covering. No, it's more than.
What you're talking about is the inflation factor that OPERS has put on.
That's the 1.75 that this is to cover.
Okay.
What's the OPERS percentage?
What's the pers- OPERS percentage, it's fourteen percent from the employee side.
Wow.
And it's higher from the employer's side.
Okay. I was just curious how that worked, I've never, you know, I've had families in the public sector like y'all are, not council members, but that's quite a, that's quite a boondoggle to follow, isn't it? Anyway.
Can be.
Yeah? Anyways, I just say that, um, I've often said that being a council member or a committee, or a commissioner in any community is a thankless job, because you have to put up with people like me. And, uh, just want to say thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
We were going to put in combat pay, just to.
Anyone else, any more council members? So we're back to, we're back to Mr. Seaver's motion and seconded by Mr. Schilling. Uh, want to repeat that again, Todd, and we'll go from there?
And I'll, uh, I will make it more clear so that, uh, Mr. Hendrickson, uh, because it's in the, it's in the memorandum, so, um, uh, the, we have been, I would move that based upon the information that we have received from the Ohio Public Employee Retirement System, that has established a required earnable salarable, salary requirement for an elected official to be eligible for a full-time service credit for pension insurance through O P E R S. O P E R S used an earnable salary increase of one point seven-five per year for years twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-nine, and established the requirement of an earnable salary of more for the following months. And then that's listed in this public record for memorandum. So in order to make things clear and simplistic and, um, reasonable, I would move that we initiate for council and council president, a two percent increase for positions that are elected on the next election cycle. So nobody in us, nobody here would be increasing their own personal salary. And for three percent for the, um, mayor, treasurer, auditor and director of law, which are four-year terms. And that those would continue from their mo- from their newly elected term, which will commence in twenty twenty-seven through twenty thirty-one. Or the election will be twenty twenty-seven, I, you'll probably commence January of twenty twenty-eight, would be my guess. So.
Second.
Did that clarify it, Mr. Hendrickson? I should be a lawyer, thank you.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Mr. Seaver, without all the language of one year, two percent on the, on the schedule for council and seconded by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Two percent and three percent.
Two percent and three percent.
And three percent for the other le- four-year, two percent for the two-year terms, three percent for the four-year terms, next term, correct?
Correct.
Okay, but the treasurer's a two-year term.
Yeah, treasurer is.
Treasurer's four.
No. It's fours.
Treasurer on our note, you say four.
Four, four years, yeah.
Treasurer's four.
They just, they're off the, so. It's the off year, right. He's like, he'll stop at twenty twenty now. Okay, Grant, can we, I guess we can do a.
Mr. Kerber, we have a question.
Can we do a roll call in the committee, is that right? Okay.
Well, let's do a roll call.
A what?
Okay, roll call. Yes, we are. It's nine, yeses, it's nine yeses, what's the problem? Please call the roll, Mrs. Knight.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
They sound so similar to me, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Phillips, Schilling, so similar.
So similar.
Yes.
Maybe you should use that one seven, maybe you should use that one seven-five for hearing aids.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall, yes. Mr. Pierce.
No.
Mrs. Stee.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Seavers.
Yes.
Mrs. Westhall.
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Thank you. Now we go to Community and Economic Development Committee, I believe. And that means Mr. Schilling.
So you're, you're adjourning the.
We're, we're adjourning the committee as a whole.